I believe you can start.
Okay. Welcome to tonight's county meeting, county commissioner meeting for April 22nd, 2021. May I have a roll call, please?
County Commissioners, Okter.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Ast.
Here.
Duffy. Lazara. Deputy Director James.
Here.
Director Lapur.
Here. Announcement of the open public meeting law.
And Director for the record, County Commissioners Duffy and Lazara are excuse for the evening.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted, the reorganization meeting filed with county clerk, posted in the administration building, and mailed to newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Have an invocation, please. Please stand. It's up to you, Bruce.
Yeah, thanks.
Oh God, who provides for thy power. Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power, rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
And to the republic.
One nation. Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving the United States Armed Forces, and all of those who have died from COVID-19, especially the over sixteen hundred residents of Passaic County. Thank you. Minutes of April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Director James, second by Best. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Okter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. I'm sorry. Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director, Director Lapur.
Yes. No proclamations. The administrators report, please.
Director, we have our, our update on our COVID-19 response by Dr. Gungil.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Whenever my kids ready. Next slide, Micah. So we continue to fight. This is day four oh eight. As of yesterday, we had sixty-four, over sixty-four thousand cases. We are up to now twenty-nine of the variants that were identified of the UK variant and two of the New York variant. Next slide, please. As of yesterday, we had sixteen hundred fifty-six deaths of Passaic County residents due to COVID-19. And over the last two weeks, we added twenty-nine deaths. Fortunately, the multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children has stabilized. We have not had a case for quite a while now. Next slide, please. This is the Epi-Carb. As you see, we're still struggling, but not where we were last year and not where we were in the fall, early last year and in the fall of last year. But we're still in COVID, time of COVID. Next slide, please. This slide shows the cases by race and ethnicity, gender, and age as of yesterday. I just want you to look at the, at the bar graph on the right. You can see the twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds are very much affected by, thank you, by, by this outbreak. And we're seeing actually more in the younger aged individuals. Next slide, please. So this slide, and by the way, as you know, you can always get a copy of the slide deck. I have a more complete slide deck, and I could make it available to you. I just selected some slides for this. So this slide shows you what we're doing in Passaic County as a county in the vaccination program. And at the left, you can see we have administered almost fifty thousand vaccines thus far in total. In the center, the bar graph shows you vaccinations that we're doing by age. And you could see sixty-five-year-olds are, you know, greatly, you can see more of them than any other group. By gender, it's, it's just a little bit over a female to male. And I'm pretty happy about the very, the one in the center bottom, which is the New Jersey Second Dose Adherence Goal. And we're looking for ninety percent. And I'm happy to tell you that our clinic that is run by Passaic County itself is having a ninety-six percent completion rate. So that's everyone who came to us, ninety-six percent are coming back for their second doses. So that's really something to, to cheer. Yeah. Next slide, please. I just wanted to give you a brief update on what's happening next. We are expanding, and this was part of our plan from the, from the get-go as things change, as more vaccines become available. And you know, we know we were going to see some changes. So we actually started with the Hilden pop-up clinic yesterday. And we basically did that over the weekend. We had a hundred and twenty-nine people show up. Eighty-four of them were residents of Hilden. So we were happy for that because people came on foot and people were served. Tomorrow, we begin our homebound program. We had put it on hold because of the J and J situation, but now everything is approved. And we're doing a pilot tomorrow with five people. We've, we have a site set up. We have a route set up, and I'm pretty happy about that. And this is in collaboration with EMT from the Sheriff's Department. We also, I wanted to let you know that beginning this Thursday and all the Thursdays following, at the Camp Hope testing site, we're actually going to do vaccinations as well. So we're making it a hybrid where you can get tested over here, if that's what you're coming for, and you'll be vaccinated over there if that's what you're coming for, because we're already there, the resources are there, and it just makes sense to expand it to cover everything. And we're working on more mobile clinics throughout the county, particularly in populations who are more vulnerable and who have access issues to getting to our sites. Next slide, please. This slide is just to, you know, to pay homage to our partners in Passaic County. In this case, the public have partners because everyone is doing something. Again, I could make this slide available to you. I'm just going to highlight one bullet from Clifton, for example. They did a walk-up clinic at Botany Village. They went with a hundred vaccines, hoping that they'll get people. They got there, and there were more people than they expected. They went back and got more vaccines, and they successfully vaccinated two hundred and thirty people. Yeah, that was really a good thing. People who would otherwise not have come to their drive-through clinic. In Passaic City, they're partnering with St. Mary's and North Hudson Community Action Corporation, which is the federally qualified health center, and they have Thursday clinics. And in Wayne, they're, they have already done their housing complexes, senior housing complexes, and they're working with their corporate partners, identifying employees and their families and offering them the vaccine. In Patterson, they're resuming their homebound program, and they continue to test six days a week. And just for us, this, the program we told you about with FEMA, a FEMA initiative that we partnered with St. Joseph to bring, we were able to vaccinate, St. Joseph, so the heavy lift, over nine thousand residents in two weeks. And the targeted twelve zip codes, we were able to attain fifty-four percent of that nine thousand people were from the targeted zip code. So that was success all the way around. All right, next slide, please. All right. So what does it look like as a whole? So in our clinic, again, your clinic, Passaic County Clinic, we are seeing about eighty-three percent of all the people that we see are Passaic County residents. So we're, we're getting our people. Next slide, please. This is just, you know, another visual of who's getting, you know, of the vaccines that have been administered. And this is with all vaccinators in the county. So the hospital, the, the other health departments, the pharmacies, everyone who's vaccinating, three hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-four vaccines have been administered in Passaic County. I mean, two Passaic County residents. Next slide, please. All right, this is a breakdown by race and ethnicity, and this is as of yesterday. So that's what, the, the number I showed you before, this is what it looks like. But there's, there's some good news here with the race and ethnicity piece. We're seeing an increase in the black population. So now, I believe last, two weeks ago, we were at four point five, I believe, so we went up a half a percentage point. That's a really important move of the needle. And part of that is because of the zip codes and locations that we've been targeting. Same with the Hispanic Latino population, twenty-two percent. And obviously, we're getting the other populations as well. So I mean, we're, we're doing some, we're doing some good work. On the left side of that grant is showing you the breakdown of the population. And so you can see where we, where we are and where we need to be in terms of who is getting vaccinated. Next slide, please. All right. So this is a kind of a busy slide. I only give you a section of it because we get this from the, from the state once a week. And my, my administrator and I have talked about this slide at Norzum, but I'm just going to give it to you the way they send it to us. Again, you know, you want to see it in more detail, I can, I can send it to you. As I try to understand it, that first column that says percentage course initiated, I think those are new people who have just started their process. And course completed, that's they went through the entire process. This, this, at least one dose includes, I think, again, everyone, including the J and J people, and that in a, in a shorter way, it's adding column A and column C to get column B. And that's something I don't, you know, I don't know what else to say about it, but this is what we see from the state. I was telling Mr. De Nova that I think that column B, at least one dose percent adult population is kind of what they want to look at because that's really, even if you get one dose, you have some level of protection. So that's what they're, they're looking at to try to get to that herd immunity that could protect all of us. Next slide, please. So what does that look like overall? This is what that looks like. So a hundred and thirty-one thousand and six people have been vaccinated completely in Passaic County. And so we're, we're getting there to our goal. We're almost halfway there. That's a, that's a good thing. Hopefully, we'll be able to convince people who are hesitant to get their, their vaccine. Next slide, please. All right. Again, I've shown you this slide in different ways. But there's been a change, and so I wanted to bring that change to your attention. The J and J vaccine, in the past, we were told four weeks after your vaccine. Now we're being told two weeks after your shot, you are protected. So I thought it was important for me to share this with you, particularly with what was happening in the news. Next slide, please. And lastly, we continue to fight COVID-19. I, I will ask people to please tell their family, friends, et cetera, to come to our site to get vaccinated. They can register online. If, if they're able to, if they're not, they can walk into our site. This Thursday, we are going to be at Camp Hope in West Milford. Again, you can walk in. And you can also call this office at nine seven three eight eight one four three nine six, the Health Department Office, to make an appointment for this particular vaccine. But, you know, you have options, but you need to get vaccinated. That's the best thing we can do right now to bring us back to some semblance of normalcy. And thank you, sirs. This is my presentation for today.
Thanks. This was uplifting, actually. This is pretty good news. All of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions?
Through, through your director, I'm interested to know, Dr. Gungil, how much of that gap between where we are and where we want to be? I mean, we're at halfway to our goal of a seventy percent inoculation rate, which gets us close to that so-called herd immunity goal. How much of that do you think is people who just haven't gotten the shot yet? And how much is people who are reluctant or not intending to get the shot when we need to, you know, persuade and educate a little bit more?
So I, I can't give you numbers, but what I can tell you is this. I saw my phones ringing here. We were getting four hundred calls a day. I had everyone answering the phone because that was really critical. And then there was a steep decline in calls to probably about thirty calls a day regarding vaccines. And that happened when the J and J was pulled off the market. So there is that piece. But I'll tell you, there is another piece that is really a critical part, and that is accessibility. We take us that use the computer and are on the internet and understand how that work, we take that for granted for the population. It is not for granted. Yesterday was a prime example, and the example I gave you with the Botany Village in Clifton is that when you bring the services to the people, you will discover that they will come, right? Build it, and they'll come. They will come. There is vaccine hesitancy. When my staff was out on Friday, I had them make flyers and, and literally went on foot. I said, public health is boots on the ground. They went through Hilden, they went to, to laundromats, pharmacy, everywhere, giving out flyers for that clinic yesterday. And people had questions. And so they were able to, they were health educators and so on. They were able to answer the questions, and people came because their questions were answered on a one-on-one basis with somebody who knew what the answers were. So I think there's a whole education piece that we're missing. And then there is the access to, to the service, which is not there when we are relying solely on, on a technology. I think if we can bridge those gaps, answer those questions, and be in the community, I think we'll get a tremendous amount of, of, of support and that people will be vaccinated.
I agree.
Through your director, Dr. Gungil, as well as Tony, the CDC and President Biden, the CDC issued new guidelines in regards to masking. Basically, apart from being in really large crowd settings in which they mentioned stadiums and, and things where there might be thousands of people, by and large, for the most part, people can go maskless in outdoor settings, especially if they're vaccinated. But even in cases where they're unvaccinated, that's what the CDC has put out. Are we changing our guidance and our, you know, signage and our enforcement of these things in our county parks and other places? You know, as the weather gets warmer, I think it's important that, you know, we were quick and rightfully so to enforce things when, when we tightened restrictions. When the federal government and the health authorities are loosening restrictions, I think we should also, you know, follow that guidance. And people are free to keep their masks on if they want to, but I think it's important that we not have a situation where people are following CDC guidance and then are being told, no, that's not right, because people are afraid. You know, I think we should follow the guidance as it comes. So I'm just wondering if we're, if we're changing our posture on that.
Yep. Commissioner, as you know, the guidance came out today. So we'll take a look at that, and obviously where we need to adjust to conform with the new CDC guidance, we'll certainly do that. One other thing that I want to again mention at the meeting is that, starting today, we, we are accepting walk-ins to the Modell site, and that will continue for Thursday and Friday as well as we have the vaccine to accommodate that. So again, I appreciate all of the commissioners helping spread that word as, as well.
That's, that's a big deal because I, you know, I've had a problem using the technology. I'm not stupid. So I don't, whatever it is, it is. But this is great. That's really great news. And I appreciate the fact that when I have problems, all of you have, including Tony, Dr. Gungil, have always said, like, we'll give you the names, and we'll work it through. So maybe me being stupid, but you've always been very helpful. So this is good news for people. I think if they, they don't know how to navigate the system and they can walk in, that's great. That's great news. So we should get that out to people.
Thank you.
We're going to need five people for bonding, so we should really move on.
We can't start.
Six o'clock.
Yeah, we can't start at six.
Two minutes.
Oh, Dr. Gungil, thank you very much for everything you've done. Actually, I, I begin to think that this is the more difficult part of the program where we're trying to get people to come out as opposed to trying to accommodate people who did came, come out early on when there was a scramble and all the commissioners were asked over and over again, how do I get it? Can you get me in? Now it's, we're on the other, the shoe's on the other foot. Now we're going out and we're asking people to, to come in, which, which is a good thing, which means a lot of people got vaccinated. But we, we got to keep the pressure on to let people know that COVID is still with us. And even though you're vaccinated and CDC guidelines say you don't have to wear masks out, out in, in the open, outdoors. As far as I'm concerned, depends on how many people you're around. If you're around a couple of people, I say, yeah, if you're, if you're in a crowd of a hundred people, I'd wear the mask. Because you just never know.
And, and I think that's what the CDC guidance is, is basically saying. If it's a, you know, if, if you're out running or walking and with other people that you know have been vaccinated, they're saying it's safe. But, you know, obviously, if you're in the big crowds, and again, particularly our parks where that becomes a little bit of a, you know, how do you know, right? How do you know who's who? And, and, but, you know, we'll take a look at that. And obviously, to the extent that we can relax some of our regulations, we certainly will. I mean, we want people to get outside and then enjoy our parks and enjoy the nice weather. So we will certainly, you know, take a look at that. I do want to, you know, commend again Dr. Gungil for all of the work that her and her staff have done. And similar to testing, as we saw, you know, when we had our drive-through test site in William Patterson, and we saw those numbers beginning to decline, you know, we decided that it was time to go to the people. And that's what we're going to be doing here with the vaccination. You know, clearly, there was that, that period of time where demand was far ahead of the supply. Now we have supply and the demand is diminishing. And so now we need to get to that population that has difficulty getting to any one of the sites in Passaic County. And all of our partners are facing the same thing. This is not just at the Modells, Wayne, Clifton, Patterson, everyone is seeing the same decline in demand. So, you know, this is going to be the harder part for a lot of reasons, because it's obviously more labor-intensive to go out to the people. Particularly, you know, our Meals on Wheels clients, which we obviously want to get to, but that certainly is going to take time. You need somebody to register the person, somebody to administer the shot, and then somebody to stay with that person for, at a minimum of fifteen minutes. And with that clientele, it may even be longer because of other acuities that they may have. So, you know, it, it will be labor-intensive, but I am confident that Passaic County will continue to lead in this type of effort and get to as many people. You know, listen, our goal is to, anybody who wants a shot is going to get a shot.
Do we have, do we need volunteers still? I mean, do we, do we have an active recruitment for volunteers still? Do they have to be medical staff or?
I mean, Dr. Gungil has her, her MRC, and it's a great group of volunteers that basically, you know, ran our test site for however many months we ran the William Patterson test site. It seems like a hundred years ago already. But we have a great group of volunteers, and, and we, you know, we do think we have the volunteers to do what we need to do to, to, to get to the people. As I said, it's just, you know, where you could do a thousand, two thousand people a day at the Modells, you're not going to do a thousand shut-ins in one day. It's just going to take time. But listen, we're going to do it because we have to.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to the motion to suspend the regular order of business.
I'll move it.
Moved by Deputy Director James.
Second.
Second, but I think. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Okter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. Bond ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh four.
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of and payment of the purchase price for certain real property, including real property, property commonly known as four, six, seven, dash, five, one, seven, River Street in, in the city of Patterson, and improvement thereon by and in the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, appropriating two, two hundred, I'm sorry, twenty million, therefore authorizing nine million bonds or notes of the county to finance part of the cost thereof.
Motion to term in a public hearing on bond ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh four. Moved by Deputy Director James. Second by Commissioner Okter. Roll call.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. Does anyone present or online desire to be heard on bond ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh four? Lou, this is where I turn it over to you.
Okay. First, I'll, I'll start with Micah. Do you have anybody waiting in the WebEx that wants to make comments?
I see no hands raised in the WebEx, in the chat, or in the Q and A section.
Okay. Also, for, for the record, Director, we have not received any emails at public@passaiccountyNJ.org. It represents the bond ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh four. There has been no, no comments regarding that.
All right. Before I ask for motion to close, Mr. De Nova, would you like to add anything?
Sure, Director. Just as a reminder, this is the purchase of the, what we commonly call the warehouse on River Street, which houses our purchasing department, our superintendent of elections, and the warehouse for all of our voting machines, our county superintendent of schools, as well as the warehouse that the county uses for storage and archiving documents, as well as our buildings and grounds and our weights and measures. This building has been leased by the county for a number of years. The, the negotiation of the last lease allowed us to have the first right of refusal to purchase the property. We are in a position to purchase it. It's a, it's a good deal for, for the taxpayers. As you know, the purchase price is eighteen million. We're putting another two million dollars into this bond ordinance for improvements that we need to make to the building that we didn't make before, because it wasn't in our best interest to do. We are only bonding nine million dollars. The other eleven million dollars will be cash. And just to put it in perspective, last year, between rent, sewer fees, and taxes, we paid one point six million dollars for, to lease that piece of property. The debt service on the nine million dollars will be approximately five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year. A savings of over a million dollars a year in the county budget.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. De Nova? All right. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing on bond ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh four.
I'll move it.
Moved by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Okter. Assad. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Okter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Ast.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. Motion towards up on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh four.
And Director, if I may, this bond ordinance does require five votes. I know we only have five free holders here, but the bond ordinance does require but the bond ordinance, uh, does require five votes for passage.
All right, I'll move it.
Moving by Deputy Director James.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Octor. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Motion to resume the regular order of business.
Um, move it.
Moved by Commissioner James. Second by Commissioner Assad. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Ask.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Unless, uh, any of the commissioners have a report they'd want to, uh, proceed with, I will suspend the county commissioner reports. No communications. Motion to open the public portion.
I will move it.
Moved by Commissioner Best, second by Commissioner Octor. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Anyone from the public, either virtually or outside the building, would like to comment?
Micah, do, do we have anybody with their hands raised in the WebEx?
I see no hands raised in WebEx, nothing in chat, nothing in the Q and A, and I don't see any comments on the Facebook app.
All right, I move to close.
Motion made by Deputy Director James to close, second by Commissioner Octor, I believe. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. As you can see, we need to get back into the room. Take a motion. Oh, is there any, uh, late starters, uh, county council?
Uh, Director, I have no late starters. Um, there's no need for an executive session. Just my general reminder. Commissioners want something to be taken off the consent agenda to make that motion through you.
Very good. I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
I will move it.
Moved by Commissioner Deputy Director James.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Octor. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Good to see everybody. Such a humor is intact. I'll take a motion for the personnel.
I move the personnel agenda.
Motion made by Deputy Director James.
Second.
Second by.
Octor.
Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Motion on the bills.
Move the bills list.
Motion made by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Octor. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. If, uh, no one has any other comment or business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Almost so moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Bartlett, second by Commissioner Octor. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Uh, good night, everyone. Stay safe.
Good night. Drive safely, Pat. I know where you're going. Good night, everybody.